Nineteen eighty nine.
My dream.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Glasgow City Council Meeting for this Monday, May the twelfth. I'll ask for you to stand and join me as we say our pledge to the flag.
Our pledge to the flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing. Councilman Kirkpatrick will lead us in our invocation.
Bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, thank you for today, and thank you for the opportunity to serve Glasgow. Lord, I ask for your wisdom and guidance in our decision-making, and that it reflects the common good with compassion, and to listen respectfully to one another. Lord, I also ask that you lay your healing hands on a wonderful man in our community tonight, Mr. Daryl Pickett. Be with his doctors and give his family comfort and peace. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You may be seated. Now, the, I will now ask Clerk Cashin to call the roll.
Kirkpatrick?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Kirk? Morris?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Neil?
Here.
Wilkinson? Banel?
President.
Burris?
Here.
Lowry?
Here.
All right, it appears we have a quorum, so we can move forward with the meeting tonight. And the first thing we've got to do is to approve the agenda, which we're going to operate under. So you've got in your package the proposed agenda. I will entertain a motion that we approve the agenda to move forward with tonight.
Motion, Banel.
Second, Lowry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, and we now will move forward, and the first item of the agenda is to approve the minutes from our meeting back on April the twenty-eighth. You've had these in your possession, and it would be, I would entertain a motion for us to approve those minutes and to enter them into the record.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Okay, is there a second? Second, Norris. Okay. Motion and a second on the minutes of the twenty-eighth meeting. Is there any discussion on those minutes? All right, there being none, then I'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We will enter the record, enter into the record the minutes of the April the twenty-eighth council meeting. We like to have some presentations where we can learn. A lot of times it's from our department heads. We're learning from our chief barrister tonight. City Attorney Rich Alexander is here, and I've asked him to give us an update. You know, we've, we've had the short session of the legislature. There's some changes that are going to be affecting cities in the state of Kentucky, and Rich has done research and has come up with a presentation to explain to us what we're going to be dealing with when the new laws take effect. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I want to share with you a summary of some of the new legislation coming out of the two thousand twenty-five Juneal Assembly Session that just concluded in March. In the two thousand twenty-five session, a total of a thousand and eighty bills were filed, and of those filed, a hundred and forty-eight bills were ultimately enacted. Trust me, I'm not going to review all hundred and forty-eight tonight, but my focus this evening is on the bills that relate to local government, and more specifically to cities that are of interest in size like Glasgow. So I want to take a look at some of those that would potentially have an impact or be of interest to us. The stuff can be a bit dry and technical, but I'll do my best to keep you awake, and I'll try not to take up too much time. So here we go. But, and keep in mind, too, that the majority of these new laws that I'll be discussing take effect on June the twenty-seventh of this year, unless they are more specifically addressed with an earlier date. So the first one is House Bill three twenty-one. It relates to planning and zoning, and it's a little bit of a housekeeping bill. It extends the time allowed for Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment members to complete their required orientation training. This is for new members of both of those entities. The four hours of required training can be completed now in one year, as opposed to a hundred and twenty days, which was the previous law. And then for existing members of both of those entities, there is a eight-hour continuing education requirement. It used to be that you had to complete that within two years. Now you can complete that within four years. The training for both new and existing members of both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustment also has to include one hour of focus on zoning policies and procedures that deal with housing supply and accessibility. And then one interesting item of House Bill three twenty-one is that it now includes language that limits those who are authorized to appeal a final action of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The previous law said that, quote, "Any person or entity claiming to be injured or aggrieved could appeal." Now, the legislature has limited that to only individuals who are owners of the real property within the zone where the property is located. So that's sort of a benefit to cities and their planning and zoning laws. It limits that group of people who can appeal. Next bill is House Bill three sixty-nine that deals with police annual leave. Previously, in talking with Chief Howie previously, because of a lawsuit in Richmond, Kentucky, the annual paid leave was required to be paid upfront. Now with House Bill three sixty-nine, it stipulates that the fifteen days of annual paid leave that's required to be provided to police officers can be accrued over a one-year time period, as established by the city's personnel and policies manual. Next bill is House Bill four thirty-seven, which relates to ABC police powers. That's the alcohol beverage and control for local governments. And this removes the power to make arrests from local alcohol beverage control administrators and investigators unless those individuals are certified under the Peace Officer Professional Standards, the POPs course, just like a regular police officer. So I'm not sure if Nick Hurt has done any arresting here lately, but I'm sorry to tell Nick, he no longer has arrest powers.
He'll be disappointed.
Be disappointed. Next law is House Bill five twenty, and this is an interesting cleanup or housekeeping of the Open Records Act. There currently is an exemption under the Open Records Act that relates to police officer investigations and the records that are generated when, when a crime is committed and the police department investigates. It provides now, under House Bill five twenty, that law enforcement records compiled in the process of detecting and investigating violations shall be exempt from disclosure under the Open Records Act if the disclosure of the information could pose an articulable risk of harm to the law enforcement agency or its investigation by revealing the identity of informants or witnesses not otherwise known, or by the premature release of the information to be used in a prospective law enforcement action. This is really a, an opening up or a more liberal interpretation of the Open Records Act. The previous exemption said, instead of it saying articulable risk of harm, it said that it could be withheld if it would pose harm. So the way I read this law is it is geared now more toward releasing the information rather than denying the request. And the burden is now on the city to be able to articulate a specific reason why those records should not be released, rather than just to broadly say that we think that it would pose a harm if that record was released. Next law is Senate Bill two thirty-seven. I call this the recruitment law, and I think that in reading some of the legislative notes for this bill, it was to address a shortage of law enforcement officers. And House Bill two thirty-seven says now that an individual is certified as a law enforcement officer if they come from another state and have been serving as a law enforcement officer in the last three months. They are, if they are in good standing with his or her certifying agency, and have been continuously employed as a law enforcement officer within that state where he or she is certified for at least ten years prior to application, and if they pass a physical agility qualification as part of their certification in their home state, they can now be sort of reciprocity. So if you were a police officer, and you met all of those qualifications from the state of Indiana, and you wanted to apply to the Glasgow Police Department as a police officer, the qualifications that you had in Indiana would carry over into the state of Kentucky without requiring that police officer to meet the Commonwealth of Kentucky standards. So it broadens the pool of individuals who are able to apply for police officers in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And then there's an interesting add-on to that Senate bill, and it requires that part-time telecommunications, which will be like our nine-one-one dispatch, it requires them to complete a forty-hour online training course, and allows fully-trained part-time telecommunications credits toward a full-time academy to be carried over, again, trying to help out the pool of people that are certified to be nine-one-one dispatchers. Next law is Senate Bill twenty-five. This deals with fire prevention and protection. This is not a mandatory law, but it allows the creation of a local appeals board to appeal final orders of fire chiefs and fire marshals, state fire marshals. State fire marshals will still hear appeals in areas where no local appeals board has jurisdiction. We don't, to my knowledge, we've not set that up yet. Again, it's not required. If, if a city decided to set up a local appeals board, it has to be a five-member board, and it has to be composed of technically qualified professionals from fire prevention or the construction industry. And at least three members have to be non-city employees. So that might be something that we want to talk with the fire chief in the future and see if that might be an option, if, if, if there's some benefit to, to creating that board. Again, not, not a mandatory requirement. Next piece of legislation, it really applies not just to Glasgow, but to all citizens of Kentucky, and it's probably good news for everybody. Senate Bill, or excuse me, House Bill one reduces the Kentucky Individual Income Tax Rate from four percent to three-point five percent for taxable years beginning on or after January one of two thousand twenty-six. So our income tax in Kentucky is going to be reduced by half a percent. Next law is House Bill ten, and this is an interesting twist to our current eviction laws. Might be of some interest to anyone listening who owns rental property, but it allows a property owner or authorized agent to request a law enforcement officer to immediately remove a person or persons unlawfully occupying a residential dwelling or other structure on the real property, commonly referred to as a squatter, instead of filing a complaint and having that individual removed by what we call forcible detainee process. Now, in Kentucky, if you have a piece of property, even if it's not rental property, even if the individual that's there is there by your permission, and they're not paying any rent, if you say, "I want you to move out," and they say, "No," then you've got to give them a thirty-day written notice to vacate, and if they do not get out in thirty days, then you have to file a eviction complaint in the district court, have a hearing, and then the judge will enter an order requiring them to move. Under this new law, if the individual that refuses to get out falls under the definition of a squatter, then you, as the landowner, can contact law enforcement, and they will go out and remove the individual without having to file any sort of eviction proceeding. So that might be of some benefit to rental property owners. House Bill fifteen, and this one, I'm, I'm glad that all of my kids are now adults. This allows persons who are at least fifteen years of age to apply for an instruction permit to operate a motor vehicle. The permit shall be valid for four years instead of three years as currently provided, and it may be renewed. Now, this is one of the, the laws that took effect earlier. It became effective March twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-five. And I guess it's still better than what it used to be. When I got my permit, like probably a lot of you all, I could take the driver's test in thirty days, and I was ready to roll. Don't know that that was probably a good idea back then, but now it's fifteen. Next law is House Bill twenty-seven, and this one I thought was interesting because I think last meeting we talked about yard signs and signs along the right-of-ways and highways. This, House Bill twenty-seven, deals with political yard signs, and it provides that the law stating or governing documents of a association like a subdivision or a homeowners' association cannot prohibit the outdoor display of political yard signs by an owner or a resident on the owner or residence property. And this, again, extends to all planned communities. Could be a condominium association. It could be any, any type of planned development. And any existing governing documents of a planned community that contravene this are declared null and void. Signs can be displayed no earlier than thirty days before an election, and no later than seven days after the election, unless the city decides to pass a longer time period by ordinance. So in that limited area of political signs, it's thirty days before. You can have them up seven days. They've got to be gone after the election. Next bill is House Bill one sixty. The, the gist of this piece of legislation is that qualified manufactured homes are now on equal par with single-family residences. And this bill amended the definition of qualified manufactured home and prohibits zoning regulations that exclude qualified manufactured homes from any residential zone where single-family residences are permitted. You cannot discriminate against a qualified manufactured home or impose certain foundation requirements on manufactured homes. It requires compatibility standards to be equivalent to those of any other single-family residential structure. This law takes effect July one of two thousand twenty-six, not this year, but July one of two thousand twenty-six. Next law that I wanted to mention is House Bill four ninety-three. It relates to towing of motor vehicles. And the reason I thought this might be relevant was it could have some potential impact on our police department. It states that it requires a department, the Department for Vehicle Regulation, to issue towing or storage certificates to operators of tow trucks and storage facilities, and requires applicants to maintain a single rate sheet that is reasonable and customary and submit it to the department. And it requires an agency placing a civil or criminal investigatory hold on a vehicle to notify the vehicle owner within five business days of the hold's initiation, and then within two business days of its release. So if our police department is conducting an investigation, drug bust or something of that nature, and they confiscate the vehicle, this new legislation requires that, and we, we may already be doing it, I don't know, but it, it now requires that we give the owner of that vehicle a five-day notice that it's been taken where it is, that sort of thing. House Bill five forty-six deals with grants as it relates to roads, and it establishes the Local Assistance Road Program to provide funding for road rehabilitation projects in Kentucky's cities and counties. But here's the catch. It says that only rehabilitation projects that bring the road or street back to its original condition, not projects that increase capacity or involve other improvements over the original design of the road, will be considered. The maximum amount of funding that a city or county may receive for an individual project under this particular grant is five hundred thousand dollars, and it requires matching requirements from, anywhere from ten percent to twenty percent. So if you, I, I guess this is put in place so that if you had a natural disaster or something that, that tore up a, a city street, and you needed some grant funding to rehabilitate that, if all you're trying to do is bring the street back to its original condition, then this particular grant, up to five hundred thousand dollars, would be available for a city to, to make application. Next bill is House Bill five fifty-two, and it deals with tourist and convention commissions. And I thought it was interesting to bring up that, that this, the important part of this legislation is that it removes the one percent cap on the additional transit room tax that multi-county tourist and convention commissions may levy above the three percent rate. If it's approved by each governing body represented on the tourist commission, the additional tax may now exceed one percent when used to fund regional efforts, and it may be used for more purposes in addition to promoting tourism and conventions. Next bill is House Bill six oh six, and this relates to regional economic development. Again, I don't know all of the details or how this came about, but I thought it was something interesting to bring up because we're always considering economic development. But this law allows two or more local governments constituting a multi-county region to enter into an interlocal agreement to develop real estate as part of a regional economic development project. It requires that the project consists of three hundred or more contiguous acres located in the jurisdiction of a local government that is part of the interlocal agreement, but it has to result in the creation of five hundred new jobs. And it also authorizes the district to levy a special ad valorem tax on that property within the jurisdictional boundaries of the district. So that, that's another tool in the toolbox for economic development if you wanted to partner with a neighboring local government. Next law is Senate Bill sixty-three. This is an interesting one, similar to the golf cart law from a few years back, but this is a law that deals with special-purpose vehicles. Now, this, this law is what I call an opt-in law. So a city like Glasgow would have to pass an ordinance to allow this to happen. If they didn't, then it, it would not impact the municipality. But Senate Bill sixty-three permits the operation of street-legal special-purpose vehicles on public highways, subject to specific equipment registration and use requirements. This is like your ATVs, your side-by-sides, souped-up motorized golf carts, that sort of thing. And it defines a street-legal special-purpose vehicle as a non-agricultural, non-low-speed vehicle equipped with over fifteen required safety features like headlights, turn signals, brake lights, emergency brakes, seat belts, things of that nature. And it states that these vehicles must also be registered and insured in the same manner as motor vehicles, and operators must have the vehicle inspected by a certified inspector before inspection, before registration. But these vehicles cannot go onto highways, interstates, parkways, or any other roadway prohibited by the federal government. Local governments may limit their use by ordinance, as I said. So I don't know if we're going to have a bunch of ATVs going around the square, but we would have to opt in if we're going to allow that to happen. But, but it is available. The next piece of legislation is, this is an important one, in my opinion, highly relevant to today's times. Statistics show that traditional tobacco cigarette use among teenagers is at an all-time low, but teen vaping is rising dramatically. Of the forty million Americans that smoke e-cigarettes now, statistics show that two-point-six million are of middle-school or high-school age. And so this Senate Bill one hundred establishes the Division of Tobacco, Nicotine, and Vapor Product Licensing within the Department of Alcohol Beverage and Control to license and regulate the sale and distribution of tobacco, alternative nicotine, and vaping products. And what it also does is it requires retailers who sell tobacco, vaping products, alternative nicotine products to be licensed effective January one of two thousand twenty-six, and gives the Department of Alcohol Beverage and Control the inspection and enforcement power similar to those for alcohol retailers. It stipulates that any person under the age of twenty-one found to be in possession or consuming these type of products may be required to participate in a community service program or attend a tobacco cessation program. This became effective, parts of it became effective March of this year. The licensing requirements become effective January one of two thousand twenty-six. So I think Chief Howie probably is very much in favor of So I think Chief Howie probably is very much in favor of this legislation. We had been talking prior to the adoption of this law of perhaps looking at it on a local level, but I think what we're going to do right now is see how this new legislation goes, see if it addresses it, and then we can come back and take a look at a later date. Senate Bill 129 is the emergency response fee law. And the reason I bring this up is that it applies to our 911, anybody calling. And if an emergency response comes to a landowner's property, this law prohibits any local government, special district, or other provider of any emergency response service to submit a demand for payment or require a landlord to pay any emergency response fee if it arises out of actions of the tenant or his or her guest, and if it was not the result of any failure by the landlord to maintain the building in compliance with housing laws, plumbing requirements, you know, nuisance code regulations. So what that means, and I think it's probably a good law, if you're a landlord and you have multiple properties and one of your tenants calls 911 and EMS comes out or whatever the emergency response is, the landlord is not going to be responsible for any fee for them coming out, trying to recoup their cost. It's going to be on the tenant. But nothing would prevent local government under this law from submitting a demand for payment upon the responsible party. It's just, it's a protection for the landlord. And I think that's it. Yeah, I hear some snoring there.
It's fascinating, for sure.
I'll entertain any questions, but honestly, I can't really get deep into the weeds. This is kind of a summary. But if you have any questions about any particular topic that I have discussed, get with me after the meeting, and I'll certainly research it in greater detail and try to get you that answer.
All right, so we'll just wait until the end of the meeting if they have a question for you about something. But I thought your presentation was very good. You know, of course, we have an excellent city attorney, and Rich has to keep up with all these things to keep us in compliance, but it helps if we know a little bit about it. And probably, of course, one of Rich's law partners is a longtime Speaker of the House of Representatives, so I'm sure y'all talk about this over there during coffee breaks anyway.
That's why they call it the practice of law, Mayor. There's always new laws. You can't ever fully get it all together.
Thank you for putting that together because there's things that we all, there's a lot of perking up going on around here when we hear these things that are coming before us. All right?
Sir, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good job. Okay, we've got to go over here into the old business department where we have second reading of an ordinance. This is the second reading of the property out on Cleveland Avenue, the 1517 and 1523 Cleveland Avenue, containing 20.035 acres, and you've got more than I do.
All right. It appearing that applicant owner Chip Morgan has requested a zoning change for the property located at 1517 and 1523 Cleveland Avenue, which contains 20.035 acres more or less in Glasgow from I-1 to a B-3 classification. A schematic drawing of this property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit A. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this proposed zoning change was held on March 17 by the Joint City County Planning and Zoning Commission. It resulted in the unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from I-1 to B-3. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, are hereby adopted by the council, and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B. Now therefore, be hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located at 1517 and 1523 Cleveland Avenue, which contains 20.035 acres more or less, is rezoned from an I-1 to a B-3 classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
This is the second reading of this ordinance with these two pieces of property out on Cleveland Avenue. I will entertain a motion that we approve this ordinance on second reading.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second, Lawrence.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Being none, I will ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Neil?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Burris?
Yes.
Benell?
Lowry?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Schumaker?
Yes.
Okay, the second reading of the ordinance passes. We'll move on to some new business now that we need to consider tonight.
Next item is an ordinance establishing an ethical code of conduct applicable to the officers and employees of the city and its city agencies. And this is a 21-page ordinance, quite detailed, so I've prepared a summary, which is still pretty lengthy, but I thought it would be easier to read the summary than go through all 20-some pages. So here's the summary of the ordinance. This is an ordinance establishing a new code of ethics applicable to officers and employees of the City of Glasgow and its agency. It finds that a code of ethics is necessary for the public trust and to assure that the public's confidence in the integrity of the city's officers and employees is maintained. This ordinance establishes standards of conduct for the city's officers and employees to assure that potential conflicts of interest are handled properly and that duties are faithfully performed, and this ordinance is being enacted to meet the requirements of KRS 65.003. This ordinance defines certain words and phrases to be used in interpreting the code of ethics and establishes certain principles as it relates to conflicts of interest and the disclosures thereof, both general principles and those that pertain to contracting with the City of Glasgow. The ordinance establishes certain principles as it relates to incompatible offices, the withdrawal of participation in discussions of matters before the city, the receiving of gifts by employees and officers, and the use of city property, equipment, and personnel for private use. The ordinance prohibits nepotism and the representation of others in matters coming before the city or its agencies. It prohibits the misuse of confidential information. It prohibits a city employee or official from requesting a political campaign contribution from a subordinate or potential subordinate, or requesting that they participate in any political activity, and prohibits any political activity by city employee or officer while on duty or by using city funds, supplies, et cetera, for those purposes. The ordinance prohibits the promise of appointment or use of influence for any political activity or contribution. This ordinance establishes certain guidelines for a city employee or officer to be employed outside of his or her city responsibilities in order to avoid conflicts of interest. This ordinance prohibits accepting fees or honoraria for any speaking engagements that relate to any individual's employment or office with the city, or from publicly endorsing products or services for their own personal or financial interest. This ordinance requires mandatory reporting of any potential ethics violations if an employee or officer has reasonable suspicions to believe an ethics code violation has occurred. The ordinance establishes certain rules of professional behavior, including but not limited to a prohibition against falsely impugning the reputation of a city resident or fellow employee or officer, and it further establishes standards for attending all city meetings and the ethical use of social media and email. This ordinance establishes the requirement of an annual statement of financial interest with the Ethics Board, and it further promulgates rules and regulations for what the annual statement must contain, how those statements are controlled and maintained, and what happens if an employee or officer fails to comply with those filing requirements. The ordinance also creates an Ethics Board that is composed of three members appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council, and establishes the terms for the board members, the qualifications to serve, guidelines for conducting its business, the board's powers and duties, and the board's required training and education. The ordinance establishes protocols for filing complaints alleging ethics violations and how to conduct investigations thereof. The ordinance establishes due process rights for individuals against whom ethics complaints are lodged, including the right to a hearing and the means and methods of conducting that hearing. The ordinance establishes the right to appeal if an individual is found by the Ethics Board to have violated the Ethics Code, and establishes a one-year statute of limitations for bringing an ethics complaint. The one-year limitation begins when the potential violation is first discovered. This ordinance provides that the Ethics Board may render advisory opinions concerning matters under its jurisdiction and the effect thereof. And this ordinance provides that no officer or employee of the city or any of its agencies shall be subject to reprisal or any action which tends to discourage, restrain, deter, prevent, interfere with, or coerce or discriminate against any person who in good faith reports political, excuse me, potential ethics violations. And then the last section, by law, I have to read the penalty section in its entirety. This ordinance establishes a penalty section which states as follows. Section A, except when another penalty is specifically set forth in this ordinance or by state or federal laws, any officer or employee of the city or any city agency who is found by the Ethics Board to have violated any provision of this ordinance shall be deemed guilty of a civil offense and may be subject to a civil fine imposed by the Ethics Board not to exceed $1,000, which may be recovered by the city in a civil action in the nature of a debt if the offender fails to pay the penalty. Section B, in addition to all other penalties which may be imposed under this ordinance, any officer or employee of the city or its agencies who is found by the Ethics Board to have violated any provision of this ordinance shall forfeit to the city or the city agency an amount equal to the economic benefit or gain which the officer or employee is determined by the Ethics Board to have realized as a result of the violation. The amount of any forfeiture may be recovered by the city again in a civil action in the nature of a debt if the offender fails to pay the amount due. Section 3, or Section C rather, of the penalty section, in addition to all other penalties which may be imposed under this ordinance, a finding by the Ethics Board that an officer or employee of the city or any of its agencies is guilty of a violation of this ordinance shall be sufficient cause for the removal, suspension, demotion, or other disciplinary action by the mayor of the city or of the city agency or any other officer or agency having the power of removal or discipline. Any action to remove or discipline any officer or employee for violation of this ordinance shall be taken in accordance with all applicable ordinances and regulations of the city and all applicable laws of the Commonwealth of Kentucky. This ordinance provides that all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this new ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of the conflict. This ordinance will take effect upon its passage and publication according to law, but no earlier than July 1 of 2025.
All right, you've heard first reading of the Ethics Conduct Ordinance. First, I will entertain a motion that we approve first reading.
Motion.
From Councilman Neil, is there a second?
Second, Norris.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We'll go for discussion. Now, this particular ordinance was crafted in a committee to get it to this point. The city clerk, Danielle Cashin, was involved in preparing all this, as well as in on the committee meetings. So if there's a question about some of this, I think that she's probably the best one to find an answer if anybody in discussion wants to ask a question about this. All right, it's very well-written, but it is so important. You know, you just, the voters who vote for the people that sit up here expect people to have a certain amount of behavior, a certain amount of ethics. And unfortunately, history has shown us over the many years that it's not always the case, and we need a vehicle whereby to deal with that. And that's why we get this taken care of early so we have it to work with. So I will, having a motion and a second, I will call the question. All those in favor of approving first reading of this ordinance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right, thank you very much. Good job.
We hope that nobody'll ever use it, right?
Well, I mean, you know, that's the thing, but it, you know, I've been on Ethics Board with the county before, and it does occasionally, somebody will question something, and I'll tell you, we have a very good, the city has a very good Ethics Board. There's three people. There's Attorney Ben Rogers, retired educator Rossi Kingry, and Reverend Dr. Michael Rice. Now, that is an ethics committee for sure, that we're in good hands with them. So I feel good about that. But you're right, Freddie, it's best to not have to use it. But it's good to have the vehicle in place before the need arises to. Okay, Rich, we're wearing you out tonight, but we've got one more ordinance to consider.
Next item is a first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-3049, which is the city's annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Be hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow that its annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 is hereby amended as follows. Section 1, there is hereby transferred $98,400 from the Parks and Recreation Contract Improvement Account to the Parks and Recreation Payment of Borrowed Monies Account for interest payment on the bond proceeds monies. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Okay, you have heard the reading of this particular ordinance, the first reading. It's referred to as a budget amendment. First thing, I will entertain a motion to put it up on the table for approval.
Motion.
Okay, from Councilman Neil, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, I'll open up the floor for discussion. Any discussion about this?
Mayor, you might explain it just a little bit, what's taking place here far as the interest.
Okay, I will ask, Maddie and Stephanie are here tonight. Do y'all want to, one of y'all want to come up here and explain about the interest? I could do it, like you didn't do that right.
This is actually just classification to make it in a proper line item for when we pay this payment. Money's already there, all you're doing is moving it, transferring it from one line item to another.
That's basically what it is. We got the money, it's just we got to put it in the right category so we can turn around and write the check.
Yes, we did this budget right here. We didn't have the bond at that time, so this is just following classification.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I'll call the question then. All in favor of passing first reading of this ordinance indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is approved. In your packet, you had the names of some people who have been suggested for appointments for some terms that are ending on some of the various committees. Look over those, and we will have a, next meeting, we'll be able to vote on those to make those happen if you so choose. Couple of announcements, the Entertaining Glasgow Summer Concert Series, we get a lot of questions about this, and we are going to have the first production is going to be on Friday, May the 23rd, on the Glasgow Square. The chairman of Entertaining Glasgow is actually here, who probably has no idea that I was going to ask her to come up here, but do you want to say anything about the very first one? These people are really good, and I like, you put a description in our, she says, "This is a big black Cadillac, an electrifying funk and soul band, sure to get you moving."
Yeah, they, we've been, they've been requested several times. They are from the Elizabeth Town, Bartstown area. I know they play a lot of the derby parties, things like that. We're excited to have them. Several people reach out to us, and they're Several people reach out to us, and they're excited about them coming. They'll be downtown, right in front of City Hall, like always. We'll have food trucks out there, starting at 5:00. Music will start at 7:00. I believe the opener is "Miles Apart."
"Miles Apart," right.
Yes, and so they're almost southern rock, so we'll have a little bit of everything for everybody, and bring your blankets and your chairs, and come downtown and enjoy it with us.
Okay, all right. Our calendar is something people have been looking forward to. It's May the 23rd, Big Black Cadillac, so we're looking forward to that. And then we have our next council meeting will be on the 27th. Now, that is going to be a special call council meeting because the 26th of May is in fact Memorial Day, and so rather than us having a meeting on Memorial Day, we will have a special call meeting the day after Memorial Day. That will require, it'll be a very specific agenda. We won't have any open topics. We have to, on the call meetings, we have to go by the agenda, so if there's anything that needs to be on there, let's get it on there before we get started that night. And I guess the question is, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion.
From Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Neal. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for being here. Good meeting.